Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September twenty first meeting of the Salisbury City Council. We apologize for the late start today. All council members who were in attendance of the original cutting for the Rivers Age Apartments and Studio for the Arts. We are back on, we're about an hour off our original schedule and half an hour past our advertised update that time. So we thank everyone for their patience. That being said, let's get right into it. First item is Ms. Phillips' item, donation of one twenty-six Delaware Avenue. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a property donation, one twenty-six Delaware Avenue. It was approached by the property owner. They were, I'm sorry, the attorney for the property owner, interested in donating this property to the city. There are no fees due to the city other than the current year property taxes. In the packet I've included pictures of the property and on each side of the property. The condition of the property actually, I think it's a need of demolition. I've talked to Debbie Stam, there's enough money that she has left over in the community development block grant fund that she could tear down the house. So there would not be any cost to the city demolishing this property.
What do you think the cost for the demolition will be?
Between ten and twelve. Yeah, it's a pretty large property, so I think that's what it would run. That is actually a typo in the, I just saw that in the document. I have that. Yes, it actually is.
It's Mr. Mill.
It is. He's deceased, it was a family member that contacted the attorney. Yes. And they wanted to donate it to us, so I'll make the change in the resolution.
Yeah, okay. It's not Mr. Mills, it's Mr. Mill. I was calling Mr. Mill.
It was the daughter that actually transferred it, gave it back over to the bank. And the bank is HSBC. And she was transferring it over to the bank and the attorney that was doing the transfer contacted us.
So HSBC though is the current owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a relationship with them on any of the projects? Have we worked with them or have they done anything?
They have not. I'm currently working with them on some CDI properties on that list.
And positive relationships so far?
So far, yes.
Any questions?
I do, you have some other information to share. Tom has been talking to Habitat for Humanity regarding the neighboring property, one twenty-two and one twenty-four Delaware Avenue. And they are interested in donating this property to the city, a double lot.
Not asking the council to consider that at this time, she's just sharing it because of the adjacency.
Not asking that at all, caring that if we did accept this property, this would be something later. I could be possibly coming before the council.
On your side.
Yes. This is just a vacant lot and I can share this information. It could be potentially adding to that. And I'll just.
Here's the philosophical question I have then. Habitat, who is one of the partners that we want to work with to build the buildings, is giving property to us that we, you know, in theory the cycle would work that we would get property into their hands to start building. Now granted, I realize they're an organization of limited resources and they're an organization that may not be able to or want to focus on this area at this time. And if that's the situation we're in, okay. But it seems kind of backwards. And so my question would be, what are the reasons that they don't want to build there? And is there someone who would immediately come to mind who may be interested in partnering with us to build it? Or alternatively, is there another use? I don't think a part would necessarily be appropriate here that there was a part right across the pond.
Yeah, Habitat approached us about three properties, one of which is this property on Delaware Avenue. The two others, one is actually a detention pond that we probably would recommend they donate to the church nearby. And the third was a landlocked parcel off of, yeah, right there by Lake Street Playground. Is a landlocked parcel off of Delaware Avenue that we weren't interested in. Habitat indicated that they had no interest in developing this particular property. And we have reached out to, Julie, you said St. Francis was considered maybe for, at least in the interim, a community garden in that area, modeled somewhat like the one that's on Camden Avenue now. And then while we go through that process, we look at trying to market these parcels for redevelopment.
Now, the only site that would be, I think, appropriate for a community garden would potentially be, there's like a paper street or what looks like a ghosted footpath, there might be a paper street there.
Catherine and.
Between Catherine and Delaware. Is it?
I think so, yeah.
And that would be a perfectly logical place, given that you could walk through there anyway. You can see it on Google Maps, you can see it with a warm path.
It's a cut through.
Yeah, it's cut through. And if you put a community garden, it's likely to have a positive influence, just like what was the cut through. So I could see that, but probably not on the properties in question, just getting there.
Jake, I'm curious, when did they approach us about giving this property back? Did they know that we were getting ready to acquire this property or going to be acquiring this property and demolishing it, the structure?
Yeah, it's only been within the last five or six weeks maybe, and they are aware that we're going to potentially acquire this property. They're just not interested in doing anything in that location.
Okay, so maybe Salisbury Neighborhood Housing could help with selling it, selling the properties, those two properties or something?
Yeah, that, and we're also looking at, through the CDI initiative, contracting with a Realtor to start marketing some of the properties that we have available. So that's part of the longer term plan.
I was wondering if that structure being there was prohibiting them from considering building next to it? But if that's going away and there are two lots then, there it might be more marketable.
Yeah, as you know, they're more interested in a footprint in the church street area, right now at least.
When are they going to leave church street?
I don't know. Molly will actually be in here later today, so maybe we can ask her some of those questions.
Susan, regarding the two other lots, one twenty-two and one twenty-four, is there any evidence that there's ever been any sort of construction on those two sites? Are there dips in the sidewalk there or is there an?
They were. They were houses there.
There were houses there.
I was born across the street, so.
I'm guessing you would know by the window.
I know, I know one house was there.
So there were EDUs there already and.
There were houses there.
Yeah, the SDT says that there was a primary structure at one point. It doesn't say when though.
It was the, oh, the house was small.
Roberts.
The Roberts had lived down the road.
Is it Bertha James?
So we know that there's additional infrastructure there from the street that might be accessed to support the community garden as well?
So, you know, my opinion, bottom line is that accepting the donation is fine, by many makes sense. As we accumulate, I think, I think the only hesitation and the reason for all the questions is, is, you know, you're going to have a community development initiative which we agreed to fund. What's the initiative? You know, taking properties is one thing, what's the end game? You know, what are we going to do with them? And I think the other thing that you got to recognize, I mean, when you look at cities that have been affected much more than Salisbury has by abandonment of properties and blight. The demolition can be, you know, a positive effect, but it's only an interim effect. And there's also a negative effect from demolition. Ultimately, you want to get to a place where you can redevelopment. And we've got, you know, we've got to make that economically viable and we've got to make the story viable as well. So, you know, no hesitation really in accepting this donation for me, just, you know, what are we going to do with it? And I'd be totally on board with accepting the Habitat donation too, if it's not the right area for them. But, you know, again, then who is the right partner on Delaware Avenue? Who's the right partner?
I have no problem with that house, it's a shame. But I have no problem with demolishing the greenhouse, it's been there, Mr. Miller left it, then he got sick. I have a problem getting property from Habitat or Neighborhood Housing, because I don't want it to be a dumping ground for people who may not want to do that. Maybe later on down the road they may want to come over on the west side or somewhere. This particular property right now I would deal with and have thoughts about the other property. And the question I would ask, would they consider putting a couple of houses, at least one house, on the west side? Because it was a target area many, many years ago for homeownership, you know, so.
I'll reach that.
One twenty-six is, okay, let me turn it down. But other properties I have to handle.
Is there something we could even talk about more than just a single family house? Can we look at something a little more concentrated, a little more habitable to?
You mean in terms of residential development?
Yeah.
I guess it would just depend on, it would probably depend on two things. One, the zoning, and two, it's right along the edge of the pond, so that area would probably help. Medeville as well.
Well, that'd be interesting to just investigate those possibilities.
I'll look into those two things.
We may even come up with some additional partners if we're going for something a little more magnitude to it.
I'll look into those two things and also reach out to Cheryl Meadows at Salisbury Neighborhood Housing and see if there's any interest from her.
Then, if there's nothing else, is there a council consensus to move this legislative section? Okay, next item is the Salcap Properties, the donation of three seventeen and three twenty-five Lake Street.
I'm going to do that from right here, Susan, I think we'll be okay. When the council asked, discuss the recommendation to accept the Kaploff property as a donation, the directive was for the administration to go back and talk to other environmental providers that could, pardon the pun, drill down a bit on what the hazards might be there. We talked to, Susan and her staff did talk to Sussex Environmental, they've helped us in the past. They indicated that this was outside of their scope of work. We talked to John Hines and Associates and AIM Services. Both visited the location and indicated that at minimum the cost would probably be five thousand dollars to conduct any additional testing. It was indicated at some point along the way during my reading that it was about forty-seven hundred dollars to do the environmental testing for the site where the current fire station is. In reviewing the Hines and AIM Services Incorporated reviewed the reports and findings from MBE and EPA and indicated that while they'd be happy to perform the workforce, they really didn't see the need in going through that exercise again. I would bring to the council's attention a letter that is a part of your packet, and forgive me, I don't know exactly where you'd find it. The packet in its entirety is not numbered. But it was a March eleventh, two thousand nine letter to me in my capacity then as Director of Neighborhood Services from Herbert Mead, who is the administrator of the oil control program. And there were three cases open at one time on this property and all three cases have been closed. It's satisfied to MBE's expectations. It is true that if the city accepts this property and at some point there is a soil disturbance, that soil would have to be treated appropriately for the finding.
As in removed?
Yes. So if we were going to, for example, trench in a new water line and new sewer lateral, we would have to deal with some remediation on that soil if it were determined that it was contaminated in some way. Aside from that, there's really nothing that the city needs to do right now. So if it's the council's desire to get additional testing done, we'd be happy to do that. We understand that was the directive when we left you last time. If we're going to do that, it would require a budget amendment because we don't have the five or seven thousand dollars that it's going to cost to get that worked on. So with all due respect to the council, I'm asking the council to consider the donation minus the additional testing based on the results of the conversations that we had with Sussex or Hines and Associates and AIM.
Mr. President? Could I suggest an alternative?
Sure.
I would be totally in favor of this if we could get the owners to indemnify, as we wouldn't, because if you're purchasing the land, indemnify us in all environmental areas. Have them sign that and then that puts us at no risk. Mr. Tillman, is that a feasible?
I'm sorry, I was reading a written document, what was that again?
My recommendation would, relative to this, would be to indemnify, have the original owners in their donation indemnify the city from all future EPA actions and be responsible for the remediation, which then releases us from any obligations.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea if they'll do it.
My guess would be that they would not agree to that, which is then why I am against receiving this.
Who is, who is the representative of, are we dealing with Dr. Kaploff? Or is there a representative of?
Dr. Kaploff is one of the parties, there's two, it's Mr. Kaploff and a representative from a university in Florida.
Representative from a university in Florida, interesting. Okay. Yeah, I wonder if we couldn't take the time to talk to Dr. Kaploff? Have we been in touch with him directly?
No, I've just been discussing with Laura Hay. She's a local attorney, TJ Milner's office.
Okay, and she represents, all right, well, and maybe it starts with her. You know, I don't know if she'd be willing to come talk to us here. But we could certainly have a conversation about, you know, what the trade offs are. You know, we're not only accepting a donation, or talking about accepting a donation. We're going to have to pay fifty thousand dollars at least, we don't know what else.
And absorb some more costs as well.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm interested in the property. You know, I think it's strategically located, I'm interested in the redevelopment of North Prom in the long term. It's a slow process. And I think paying off fifty thousand dollars is the cheapest we're going to get as far. But if the true costs include remediation of the site, Dr. Kaploff will win fifty thousand dollars. So I like Mr. Hay's suggestion. And I think in order to be able to say that that's our strategy, I think we need Ms. Hay or Dr. Kaploff here personally.
Ma'am?
Yes.
We've been talking about this property for years and early on I recall there being just a straight property exchange from the city for about twenty thousand dollars with no other.
Always been fifty.
Always been fifty?
Always been fifty thousand, but when Mayor Tillman was on, it was fifty thousand and we voted to get it, get the property. It was three votes to get the profit at the time because Mr. Kap, this is Dr. Kaploff. He's an old man, I think he might be a hundred now, I don't know how old he is. And then it was vetoed by purchasing the property.
To get back to my point, the one sticking point has always been the environmental concerns and what we might be left with if we accept the property under any circumstances. So, you know, it could be, it could be a catastrophic number for us, you know, to come up with the amount of money that it would take to remediate this. So, yeah, let's tread carefully and have another discussion with the owner and maybe negotiate something that's a little more acceptable, as far as the responsibility goes.
Excuse me, I don't want to, we talk about environmental concerns.
Sorry?
We continue to talk about environmental concerns. Yet we do know that's not having environmental concerns that's allowed to happen still in the neighborhood. We have dust maybe coming from shit building, we don't know what, that's out there.
Oh, I know what's there.
Also we have the plant there with the bird dust. So when we talk about environmental concerns, we allow them to still exist in the neighborhood where residents live. So this, just like we do with just that, that old ugly building, although it had all, you know, environmental issues, the other that's that, you know, that shows in the community. And you have people that ride through the community to, to, I thought I said it wrong.
No, they kept.
But they, they, when you ride through the community, you hear people that live in the community say, what is the city going to do with that building? What, why is it still there? If it wasn't for a certain business, it wouldn't be allowed to happen. If it wasn't, if it's in our neighborhood, that's why it's allowed to happen. So you continue to hear the negativity that they feel, the perception that we don't care about how it looks because it's in the minority community. And we have an opportunity to get the property, whether you do anything to it, but just tear down the buildings and just leave the soil alone. And that's why I don't see, and then maybe eventually what we have done, we have made it so hard that we can't get brownfield money, am I correct? So maybe if it's tore down, maybe eventually if we talk to our congressman or somebody, you can get the money to do the testing down the road or something. So I just, I understand perfectly what Mr. Hay's saying, but I'm tired of looking at it. And the way we can get it done, let's get it done, I guess and talk to, I guess Laura, TJ's office.
Here's the thing, here's the thing. There is, I mean, every property on that strip is as unattractive as anything else. So, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to solve it all by acquiring this piece of land. But it's a step in the right direction and I think it's a positive step and I'm supportive of it. But we have, I think we have to do it carefully. You know, I think we've got to be careful, I mean, we don't want to end up with a tremendous liability on our shoulders. And so I think the way to do that is to talk to, talk directly to the source and bring them here and have a conversation and see what they're willing to do. I also think that, you know, there are going to be costs associated with demolition. And I'm not sure that the city should bear those costs and fifty thousand dollars. I would think that there's a little more horse trading to do here personally. Well, I think we.
I don't think so. I mean, what I'm hearing, what I was hearing before, it was the fifty thousand dollars, didn't you say, what did you say the last time? Didn't do it now, what happened? Did you, or have they changed your mind?
No, this is, this is it, you know, it's probably our last chance. I mean, I say that.
But our last chance, why? I mean, do we, what else is he going to do with it?
Let it sit there.
But nobody else is going to want it.
No.
Nobody else is going to take it.
Susan, you have a demolition order on those structures on the property right now? Has it come due? Have you taken it to court? Do you have an order to demolish?
Yes.
Okay, so perhaps an alternative would be to spend the money to demolish the structures and lean it.
But that's, that's, now I can take that.
See, I knew there were more options. That's a little rosier.
I knew there were additional options.
Long as you can tear it down, you know.
If we, if we did that, Mark, if we demolished the property, if we disturbed the soil, would there be any legal ramifications?
We'd have to comply with all the, any requirements that the state or federal government would have if we started disturbing the soil.
But your expenses would be leaned?
Yeah.
You've ordered it demolished, that order's not satisfied.
What is it worth? Because we could lean it for well more than its current value, but. Susan, I would say that that is a great path, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it just yet, because that's still leverage.
If that, let me just say, if that property was worth the money, a business would grab that up at its location. But I will guarantee you that no business would buy that piece of property without indemnifying themselves from future actions. That's standard in any industry, especially in the oil-based industries. Absolutely, positively. I used to run a chemical plant. I know what they do. So let's go in with our eyes wide open, let's understand what we need. It's a great idea, but the question was a valid question, if we disturb the land, it is now our land. We are now accountable. And I will guarantee you that any estimate we have for any kind of cleanup will be sorely underestimated. I have never seen one yet to come in on or under budget.
I have one more question, Susan. The EPA, because of the testing and the actions of the Army Corps of Engineers putting up the bulkheadings, the property has come off the brownfields list. If additional contaminants were found at some point either by just demolition or construction, could it be again put on the brownfield list? I thought once it was off, that was it, the EPA had done its thing and they move on. Can it requalify for that money?
I'll look into that, I'll research it.
That, that was one of my questions. One, why did it come off? Obviously, they think that it's been remediated to a satisfactory degree if the soil is undisturbed. But obviously, with those buildings there, the soil is going to be disturbed in bringing them down. Then, if it could go back on the, on the list, the city would be eligible to get brownfield money where a private investor would not necessarily. Certainly, we would have an easier time of getting those funds. They also have revitalization money as a part of the brownfield fund. And that is for, once they've done remediation, that they provide money for revitalizing a property, there are grants for that. If they've already come off the list, I don't know what bearing that has, it was a brownfield property that was cleaned up and I would think would be eligible for that. Biggest thing for me, I think, is, we're sitting here debating, well, if we, once we disturb this land and we uncover that there's additional contamination, if it's there, it's there. And refusing to do anything with the property because it might be there, or pretending that it's not there or not moving forward, doesn't make it go away. All of that is leaching into our water if it's there. It's, it's leaching into the ground and into our groundwater if it's there. And I kind of feel like it's, it's got to be somebody's responsibility to figure out whether or not it's there and clean it up. But I would like to know whether we have the option of going back to brownfield fund for that and for revitalization, given that it's coming off, come off the list or not.
Figuring out whether or not there's, that was the EPA's job and they did it, that was MBE's job and they did it. So that's, that's all, all that has to be done, has been done. The next question is, you know, who is going to do more? And I think the only answer to that, the only logical answer to that is the city right now. So the, you know, the way I look at it is acquiring it, even if we, even if we recognize that there's a risk that we're not willing to take and we don't do anything for the near term other than demolish and clear the site, I'd be okay with that. Question just is, you know, we should put ourselves in the best possible position and not put ourselves at risk for hundreds of thousands of additional dollars. And we can do that by being indemnified.
Right. And I want to point out one more thing. In the Tetra Tech report from two thousand and four, there's an interesting line in here that actually someone underlined, not me, but I highlighted it on top of it after I read it. And it says, TPH were reported in samples collected from the monitoring wells. No, no, no known groundwater standards have been promulgated to date for TPH and non-residential groundwater. That does not mean that future, it can be considered because there have been lawsuits and there have been issues for plants that existed and were held accountable for stuff that were happening before those current, our current rules were promulgated. So let's be really, really careful. And the safest thing for us is to be indemnified. If we're indemnified, not an issue. Someone's going to pay for the cleanup. But to potentially stick our residents and our taxpayers with a unknown bill for a cleanup that we're not responsible for is not good business.
I agree, I completely agree, I just don't want. I just don't want to do that.
I just have an observation. I've actually been on the site and, you know, examined the site and walked it. And again, just an observation, a casual one, is that the weeds don't even look real happy to be there. So, you know, let's proceed with caution.
Yeah, I, I agree. Proceed with caution. I just was agreeing with Mr. Day that we do need to proceed, that we need to not just throw up our hands and say, we don't want to touch it and, and leave it continue the way that it is because it is a detriment. And the other properties surrounding it aren't getting any better, but why would they? It's, it's, I look at it as the same theory as the dilapidated house in a, in a neighborhood. You start to bring one up, they all start to come up. One comes down, they all come down. And, and right now, this is the, the albatross around the rest of that area's neck.
It's almost like a gateway to our city because between, it's a heavily traveled street, is Lake Isabella and Fifty. So, so we want to talk about, it's not a welcoming sight to come into our city and see that type of stuff. And if this stuff is so contaminated, why do we let people live there and breathe in the contamination? If it's, you know, it's such, you know, considered a health issue. The water, whatever, whatever it is, some, somebody has to have, the man's a hundred years old. We're not gonna get anything out of him. We don't know how much money the man has. We don't know what his finances are or anything. And you can't, and his old saying, you can't get blood out of a maternal. So if he's not, what Mr. He suggested, suppose we can't get that. We just want to let it sit there because we can't get the suggestion. So I think the bottom line, we should keep talking over and over, talk to the lawyer.
And that's, that's what I, exactly like I suggested. So let's.
Talk to the lawyer. Let's move on.
So then I, I would see consensus to, prior to moving this to legislative session, to meet with the attorney for Dr. Capeloff.
Yeah.
And we'll have a, a conversation about indemnification, about the cost of demolition and about the potential for us doing the demolition and there being a lien on the property.
A contactor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, is there consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, this is out of order, but we have a guest. So I'm going to invite, I know you're here for the entire show.
Yep.
But if you don't mind, we'll come back to you because I think it's gonna be a longer conversation for a time. So we'll, I'd like to invite, um, the, are you?
Molly?
Okay. I'd like to involve, invite Molly Helios to come forward, the relatively new executive director of Habitat for Women. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome.
Thank you.
And the conversation today is about the waiver of central line system, or central system line fees associated with one of your projects.
Yes, four twenty-five coal circle.
Julia's gonna get you started.
Okay, Julia's gonna get us started.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so Ms. Melissa Ross came to us with, um, the idea of waiving the central system line fees and the water and sewer tap fees for four twenty-five coal circle to help make this project more feasible for Habitat. Um, and we discussed this with Public Works and the cost is going to be thirteen thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Um, and we'd like to, we'd like to have you vote on that and approve that so we can, um, continue to work on improving the Doverdale neighborhood.
Excellent. Okay. Do you mind telling us just a little bit about the project and the site?
Sure. Four twenty-five coal circle. It has been a vacant lot for, I guess, ever. Um, it used to be a garden for the homeowner that was, you know, on the, I'm not sure which side, but the, one of the sides. And, um, so being a vacant lot, it doesn't have any city water or sewer or any of that. We have a partner family already selected. That's Melissa Bailey. She's a single mom with four children. So we're gonna be building a four-bedroom, one and a half-bath house there that's a single story, affordable home. Um, we're super excited about that, by the way. And we already have secured, thanks to the generosity of the CDBG grant, monies to build part of it, which is great. And then we just had our Chefs for Habitat fundraiser on Saturday. And we, you guys are the first to know, we raised forty-seven thousand dollars that will go toward the building of that, which is terrific.
Fantastic.
It's great. It is a corner lot, and so we're gonna have to put in sidewalks, which are gonna be quite expensive. And, um, and when I was doing some preliminary budgeting, Public Works, the cost of putting in new water and sewer with everything was around seventeen thousand. Um, and I mentioned that to the mayor and, um, anyway, he worked his magic and here I am. And it's, um, you know, we're, this will help us to be able to keep this an affordable house for us to stay on budget. The house that we are about to get a certificate of occupancy on, which is at the corner of Naylor and Isabella, um, that, so far, we've spent a hundred and forty-five thousand on that house, and it appraised for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred.
Wow.
So, um, the good news is, I mean, that's, that's the good news, is that it appraised for that much. I'm thrilled. Um, and with all of the mortgage regulation, the most we can charge a homeowner is fair market value. So we, we've already lost money on that project. So this resolution, if passed, will help us to stay closer to our budget. And, um, and also will help, you know, to raise the values of properties in the neighborhood. So I thank you for your consideration.
The project at Naylor and Isabella, um, I'm trying to think of which, which corner that's on.
Uh, that is.
If you're coming from.
Yeah, if you're at the, if you're at fifth, Route Fifty, then you make the turn on Naylor.
Okay.
And it's at the corner of, is East Isabella.
Is it on the right as you're approaching Isabella?
It's on the left.
It's on the left?
It's on the left. It's the corner lot.
The far, then, and across the street, the far side, right?
Yes.
Yeah. As you're approaching from Fifty.
As you're coming, no, we, no, when you're approaching Fifty, it's on the right.
Okay, it's on the right.
It's on the right.
On the near side of that intersection.
Yes.
I saw the post office, right, the post office. It's, it's the family from Chrisville.
Correct.
Yeah.
The Zikiffus family.
I watched the news, do not go to the post office, I see it, yeah. It's not set up.
Yeah. So we're almost finished with that house.
It's really a beautiful residential lot. I mean, just gorgeous, it's surrounded by trees on either side.
On Coal Circle?
Yeah.
Um, the corner lot, there's one large tree we're, we'll have to take down because that will be where the sidewalk is, is there. And then we purchased the lot right next to it. So our goal is to build two houses side by side, two four-bedroom, one and a half-bath houses, identical. And the other, we've already selected the other partner family. So we can cut, cut some of our expenses by building both of these houses at the same time. Like, you know, one porta potty and one dumpster and, you know, all those things. And then, and then with our volunteers, we can have the volunteers working on both houses at the same time. So we'll really be able to, to, to make an impact.
And such a large project might even increase the number of volunteers that show up for the job.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, um, you know, it's my opinion that this is exactly in line with what we want to be sporting and that this is a no-brainer. Any other thoughts, questions?
I'm all right with it.
Great.
Great. Do you guys have any other questions about, um, anything?
I had mentioned earlier about the Delaware Avenue discussion.
So, right, so we were having a conversation about the Delaware Avenue site.
Okay. So, so for the benefit of, for the benefit of the council, I'm a Hurricane Katrina survivor, and, um, I had about sixty thousand dollars worth of damage to my home in Biloxi, Mississippi. And so I'm very familiar with the building standards that are required in a floodplain. And when I looked at, when I came on board with Habitat, I looked at our existing properties and the properties that are in that hundred-year floodplain were properties that would be impacted with those types of building standards. And, um, the, statistically, if you're in that hundred-year floodplain, then there is a twenty-five percent chance that the property will flood during a thirty-year mortgage. And that is something that I'm not willing, under my leadership, to put, have that risk for, um, the families that we're serving that are already at risk. And the cost of the flood insurance plus the additional building expense would be, um, not in line with our current budgets.
That's the hundred-year floodplain?
Yeah, the Delaware Avenue, absolutely. It's just.
Yeah, it's right on the water, actually.
Exactly. And, um, I also believe that if we were to apply for CDBG money, that be, when they run the environmentals, that that would, since it's already a high-risk zone, that we probably wouldn't be approved for any monies there. So it just doesn't make sense, um, from a financial or a risk perspective for our, our homeowners. So I respectfully would love to donate that property to the city as all is bearing.
Well, given the, you know, given the, uh, financial situation that most of your homeowners, your partners and clients are, are in, and given how tight I'm sure you have to run your budget, I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. Um, and I understand that. The question that arose for us, you know, half an hour ago was really, it, we funded a community development initiative that is designed to work with partners like Habitat and Sultry Neighborhood Housing and, and private developers who are focused on homeownership in the city, if that exists, and, or one day exists. We are, um, you know, finding those sorts of partners and ensuring that we are getting properties, acquiring properties that are undeveloped or, or have, you know, properties that need to be demolished in town, and then getting them in the hands of the habitats. And so this is kind of a reverse action, but I understand completely where you're, where you're headed and the reasons why these properties are not.
Right. I mean, if, if, you know, if there were, if I had a magic wand, I would wave it over that whole area and turn it into something fabulous with restaurants and shops and everything because it's overlooking the water, you know? I mean, you know, use your assets.
I was born across the street from it, so I've never seen a flood. That's why I'm surprised it was in the flood. This will hire up. It was like this, this water stream.
It's, yeah, I, I, yeah. Go on to, I think it's, I think it's called, um, Smart Flood?
We have them on the city, they're even on the city website too, the flood match.
I just learned.
Oh, yeah.
Was there?
Sorry.
So, so I'm sure we'll, uh, we'll get that donation at some point with the council.
Yes.
But in the meantime, you know, I understand completely what you're, what you're talking about.
And it would be, it would be terrific if we could do like a, I would call it like a lot swap where we donate that and then the city donates a property that we're really interested.
Love it.
You know, that would be in the, in our core Church Street neighborhood that we really are already making a, a big impact.
I, I love that idea.
Yeah, we've been talking with Habitat and they've given us a list of, I think, five properties that you're interested in acquiring from the city. So all that's coming to you.
That'd be a wonderful idea.
And it's the same, it's the same way where we would, um, be able to utilize, you know, our resources all in one little area, build those five houses all at one time, make a difference.
Excellent.
I just want to say that I totally understand your concerns regarding Biloxi. I, I was in Gulfport for six weeks after the hurricane. And few people know, you know, that New Orleans drowned, New Orleans drowned while, while Gulfport and, and Biloxi and Plascagoula and other places up and down the coast not only drowned but blew away.
Right.
You know, there was scarcely anything left in Gulfport and it was difficult to provide services.
And it was the same thing where people, you know, Ms. Shields, like, they, just like yourself, grew up in an area that had never flooded and, and then all of a sudden a big storm like that comes through and it's devastating.
Okay. I was part of Sandy, told I lost my car five feet.
Oh, wow. Well, then you do know.
On Jermaine Circle.
Great. Well, thank you guys for your support. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So congratulations on your successful fundraiser. Congratulations on the great work you're doing and let's continue to partner on things like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So is there council consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the non-conforming safety enhancements. Ms. Phillips will continue your share. Gentlemen, you want to come forward as well?
Sure.
I'm seeing this is gonna be a team effort. All right, so I'm just gonna hand it over to you and you can kind of give us the overview and walk us through the proposal.
Yes, I was here earlier this year regarding registration of multi-units. And from that, we were, it was the conclusion that we were going to bring life safety standards for those multi-units. And here I am with the life safety standards for any structure that has three or more And as you see in chapter fifteen twenty-four, I've created a subsection that addresses any structure that has three or, three or more units. And that would be, uh, section fifteen twenty-four, twelve, thirty on. And it's just a small section there explaining, um, twelve thirty, just explaining fire extinguishers, and then twelve forty.
Now, um, when we say any structure that has multiple units, um, you know, I think the, the origins, and I'm, I'm not suggesting one concept is better than another, but, you know, I remember during our conversations, the origins were focused on the non-conforming structures.
Yes.
Is the proposal that all multifamily housing be subject to the same regulations, the same rules, or that single-family structures or structures designed as single-family structures that have been modified to be multifamily structures, that they be subject because of the fire hazard that they, or the hazard that they pose to both residents, occupants, and to our firefighters?
Correct. The single-family structures that have been modified.
Okay.
That are.
Only those that have been modified.
Only those. And I can make that clear in the body of the ordinance if you like.
Please do.
Yeah. And this is.
Susan, forgive me for interrupting. You may have to further define that in four ninety in the definitions or something because if somebody looking at the property maintenance code wouldn't see the, the title of the ordinance. So it might not be clear.
Okay.
The distinction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So it would only be the, clarify that for me again, I'm not sure I'm.
Non-conforming uses.
Non-conforming uses. The single-family structures that have been divided.
Into apartments.
Into apartments, yes.
Whether they're classified as legal or illegal at this point.
Well, if they're illegal, if they're illegal non-conforming, then they have to conform.
Yeah, they're gonna be stopped.
Yeah, but we're still going through those, that back and forth for, for some of them they've.
Not if they're not legal non-conforming, then they have to conform.
Well, I know there's one in court right now that's arguing whether it's legal or not legal. So that, that's what I'm asking, is this, does this apply to all the non-conforming uses?
Well, but it'll, it'll either be legal, non-conforming, or it will conform.
Right. But while we fight that battle that could take two years in court, are they required to go in and put these in every room and, and follow these guidelines?
If they, if they appeal, they have a, um, they have a stay, so we can't do any enforcement during their appeal process.
Of anything?
Right.
Okay. Even if we just say non-conforming use?
Yeah. They have, is that correct, Mark? They have a stay of enforcement?
Only until you hear the case, though. It's, I mean, as soon as they get it to the housing board, then they make a decision.
And I don't think in any code you would say illegal, non-conforming has to do X, Y, or Z. Non-conforming uses have to do X, Y, or Z. And if you accommodate those non-conforming, that's what I would make, if you accommodate those non-conforming uses, then if you're grandfathering or whatever, then that's where you would, that's the only place where you would reference what you would require them to do. I don't know how you would encode, accept, that's something, that you would accept an illegal, non-conforming.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that in code. No, I'm, I'm not saying that in code, my, my question is in enforcement, I guess more from Mr. Tillman, if we're, if we just say this applies to nonconforming uses and we come across one that we say is illegal, they say it's legal, and while that battle goes on, are we able to make them put these life safety measures in place?
Well, if they say it's legal, then.
Then they have to follow what's, what's in here. That was my, my question, because of whether the stay applied to everything, whether it applied just to, you know, what exactly we were able to do when we came across those situations, because I know there are more of them out there.
Yeah, Mr. Tillman, can you provide any clarity on this?
What, I guess, as I understand it, then, what they're trying to do is pick up the nonconforming uses that do not meet the standard at the present time, correct? Houses that have been converted to three or more units?
Correct.
Okay, you know, I, I don't think there's any problem with that. I mean, I, I guess I'm not sure I understand what the question is. If you, in, in other words, you can impose higher standards on such buildings, even if they, if they would be grandfathered in and you decide for a life safety reason that you really have to up those requirements, I think you can do that. And you can pick these buildings, and you can do that because these really are structures that weren't intended for multifamily use to begin with, so there's all kinds of safety reasons why you can target them.
Gentlemen, can, can you speak to some of the conditions and, that you've run into in these, in these properties?
Yeah, we, we go to these problems all the time, and there's, we hang smoke alarms. It's frustrating for us because we're, we're getting a donation of smoke alarms, presumably for families who can't afford them, and we're going into rental properties, installing smoke alarms and, and this. It's very, it's, it's hard with this, with the nonconforming, when you take in a house and convert it into a, you already have one code that would already call that a, an apartment building, that the Fire Prevention Code, it's, but you don't want to get that strict, so. But we, there are, there are less than, than good conditions in a lot of these, a lot of, we're in, we're in them a lot.
I mean, my, my recollection is that, you know, even recently, we've had firefighters go into buildings and, you know, they're cut up in such a way that it's nearly impossible to tell, you know, what the floor plan is. It's not even logical because it's cut, cut up so badly. And, you know, if I remember our conversations from, what, four, five, six months ago, my recollection is that the intent was to add additional layers of protection for the occupants and for our firefighters, you know, in a conversation about registering these units. We also said, and we, that was the one thing that we kind of all agreed on was, wow, there's certainly a life safety issue here, why don't we focus first on the life safety issue? That was my recollection.
All, all these, all these recommendations are going to help the, the people who are in these houses, in these apartments, help themselves. So if they have carbon dioxide alarms, if they have smoke alarms, if they have fire extinguisher, that's going to help them get themselves out of a ha, out of an apartment, so that we don't have to. If, if we don't have to affect our rescue when we get to one of these buildings, then we can concentrate on putting the fire out, and everyone's happy, once the fire goes out, everything gets better. So all, all these, none of the, nothing that's in this legislation is, is kind of excessive. And, you know, I'm a student of the code, so.
Well, it sounds like it's somewhere in between the way we treat a single family and a, a true multifamily, designed as a multifamily apartment building. Because every apartment has to have smoke alarms, carbon dioxide detectors, and a fire extinguisher.
They don't have.
You, you could.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Every new apartment, every new apartment complex has a fire extinguisher in the apartment.
In the room, in the apartment?
Well, in the common areas.
In the, what did you just say?
They're supposed to provide.
In the common where?
Provide in the apartments as well.
They're not.
Well, that's going to depend on the size of the apartment.
In the twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen fire code, my, my reading of that is they have to provide it in the apartments.
We're still in the two thousand, two thousand, Maryland, we're still in two thousand twelve life safety code.
Maybe we need to adopt the twenty fifteen.
Well, it, it depends on the size, listen, I think everyone should have a fire extinguisher.
If we adopted the twenty fifteen standards tomorrow, would that be for new dwellings or for all dwellings? Because I can tell you, there's not, I mean, we have one, but there aren't in our apartment dwellings.
Yeah, I don't work with the two thousand, because the state's still under twelve. Our, our Fire Prevention Code is adopted by reference to the state. So maybe there's, there's a lot of changes that the state makes, and we just adopt that code. So we could easily say, let's just adopt two thousand fifteen, but then we would be out of line with all the state regulations. We wouldn't be adopting it by reference at that point. So I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the two thousand, I will be soon, because the state will come up with that.
I have, I have, I'm just playing devil's advocate, dealing with people. Now, people, the property owners, whoever puts fire alarms and smoke, carbon dioxide in their houses, and the people that live there take the batteries out. The property owner does not know that they've taken the batteries out until you go to their home. Is that, now, I know that's happening, now, right or wrong?
Well, there's, the only, the, the new smoke alarms are sealed, they're tamper resistant, so.
So they got the tamper resistant, okay, yeah.
The old ones, when you take the battery out, put them in your remote control, you can't use those anymore.
Well, that's good, all right, now, the fire extinguishers. The first thing that came to my mind was parties, the college students taking the fire extinguishers off the wall and squirting each other with them.
No college students ever done anything like that.
I'm just saying, if they had them in every, every, apart, you know, every unit, then I thought about the, the, why not have it on each end, have them on each end of the hall? But then when you go, when I saw nonconforming, now, you have, in my neighborhood, we have room and house, a few of them. So all they would have to do is have it where the, the fire would be like the kitchen in the common area. Wouldn't that, wouldn't that suffice? Like, if they had it not in each individual room, but in, in the kitchen part.
So you're asking my opinion, or?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, you, you, you're multifamily dwelling, so you've got different types of multifamily dwelling, some of them might not be apartments, some of them might be, you know, room and house.
See, this is where, this is.
See.
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed what?
Boarding houses.
What, they have them? They're there, and I don't, I don't want to say that you should get rid of them, because people have them, they're all over town.
Okay, so.
But what I'm saying, each room is supposed to have a smoke, are you saying each room is going to have?
Let's, let's focus on the, let's focus on what we've got in front of us. What we've got in front of us is that for these houses that are cut up, that are nonconforming, that the proposal is to have smoke and carbon dioxide detectors in each unit, and to have fire extinguish, fire extinguisher in each unit. And it's a pretty insidious thing to suggest that there's any problem with that. I, I have nothing further on this, so I'm done, I mean, that's.
I have a couple of questions.
I have some questions.
That's right.
Is it in the unit, or is it in every room?
That's one question.
Or outside of the smoke detector?
Both, which, which, let's take, let's take smoke detectors first. Is it in every room or every unit?
Well, you say bedroom, you say bedroom in your legislation.
In every bedroom.
Every bedroom.
It also says individual room or, or dwelling unit.
That's what, yeah, that's why I'm, I'm questioning the wording. And then for carbon dioxide, what about that? Is it per room or is it per unit?
What we're really interested in is each unit, each distinct rentable space, right?
Okay.
That, that's what I thought we were talking about.
That's, that's different than I think that.
Each part.
Yeah, and basically, the point at which you can't get to another unit without going back to a common area.
And the state law already requires a smoke alarm in every sleeping room on every level of the house.
Right.
So every, the state law already requires, if it's a bedroom and there's a bed in there, you need a smoke alarm.
That's right.
And that's required by NFPA, that, that's where they follow that, yeah.
They, they took NFPA a step further, so that was one of the things I talked about, but.
Every rental sleeping room.
Is that the way that reads?
It's every rental sleeping room.
That's every sleeping room.
Period.
Period.
Well, I mean, if you have a single-family home that you own, you know, they're not going to go in there and.
They're not going to go in there, but they're.
But it's required by state law?
It's required, yeah.
It's required by state laws.
All right.
So you're breaking the law.
So that may be the standard as far as.
I'm sorry, the, the fire code that, in Maryland, doesn't apply to one or two family dwellings. So that's why they're not breaking down any doors or anything.
So again, we're talking, you know, we're talking about multifamily dwellings, nonconforming, where it's not obvious to you when you enter, when there's a fire, how to get from one unit to another. And once again, the question is, is there a requirement to have smoke, carbon dioxide, and fire detectors and fire extinguishers in each of those units? And again, it's no brainer.
In B, it says in every bedroom.
Yeah, okay.
And common area, and stairwells, and general living area of each dwelling unit.
So smoke detectors in every bedroom, that's already required by state law. Now, in a multifamily, nonconforming unit, that, all that is, is referential to existing state law. Now, that's not a new regulation.
I believe this is for any rental bedroom. So if you've got a house that you rent a bedroom out in, that has to have a smoke detector in it because you rented out. I say this because over the past week, I've had a family member who was burned out of a house because of non-working smoke detectors, so I made it my point to.
Is that true?
That's not true, that's not at all.
Bedroom, in a rental setting. That's, that's how I read it in the, in the rental.
That's not how rentals are classified, a single-family house, if you rent out a bedroom.
It's just a border, so it's not a rental, you don't have to register it as a rental, you can have one border in your single-family home.
Bedroom, rather than that is.
With a poor smoke detector?
Sorry?
For a smoke detector?
For a smoke detector, yes. Any sleeping quarters had to have a smoke detector in it.
I have one more question about the fire extinguishers. The fire extinguisher, you said, has to be approved, approved type. So when I read this, I went online and looked at fire extinguishers, can it be the twenty-two dollar job? Or what, because I know what it costs for, for us to have it inspected every year, with these fire extinguishers that have to be inspected every year, like, you know.
The smoke detectors are, have changed now from the batter, from the basic round battery type that used to be able to get to the ten-year, that changed this year, at the end of this year, correct? They have to be all switched over to the ten-year? They're, the other ones are phased out, and the ten-year are tamper resistant. Can't take the battery out, just like the, the guys were just explaining. And they are, you put the date on, and they are guaranteed to last for ten years.
And then how do you know?
The fire extinguisher, we're talking about. I'm sorry.
The fire extinguisher, I went online and saw some twenty-two dollars, some thirty-three dollars. And what I was doing, what I was thinking about, I didn't know it was nonconforming use, I was just thinking about, like River said, you just left, they got ninety-two units, so they would need a fire extinguisher in ninety-two units, and that was about like twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-four hundred dollars. So you're not talking about that kind of house, you're talking about the, the single-family homes this was in, that's been chopped up into apartments, I just understood that. So they would have to have at least one fire extinguisher in that unit, by the kitchen. And it would, how would you know, it said they're approved types, so what type would the fire extinguisher be? Would they have to have a fire marshal come in and inspect it? Just like when we have ours as inspected.
Pretty much all of our fire extinguishers these days are ABC, aren't they?
No.
We don't see any specialized ones except in specialized areas.
Instead of approved types, so what approved type are you talking about?
You can buy ones at the store at Sam's that are not ABC. Because we had to be really careful when we bought them from Miguel's Lab, that we got the right ones.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, we, we could certainly amend the, the language to specify ABC extinguishers, which is a general, it's a general purpose.
It's the all-fire extinguisher.
ABC is a general purpose fire extinguisher, okay.
And then you're going to change to not the multifamily dwelling, but the nonconforming?
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to change that definition.
Because I was thinking about all these apartment houses and all this stuff that they've built.
And I just reference that.
I thought everyone was going to have a fire extinguisher in it.
Okay, if I may. I have some questions for, for E, F, and G. E, it says tampering, anyone tampering with, tampering or interfering with the effectiveness of a detector, shall we charge with a misdemeanor? On the word, are you going to prove who did that?
It's an existing, it's existing in the code. Why are, why are we talking about changing the existing language of the code, weakening the code? I don't understand that. I don't understand that at all.
I'm not talking about changing it, I'm asking, do we need?
That's the existing language of the code.
Okay, Mr. Day, thank you, but maybe it needs to be more specific. Who's getting, I mean, is it the property owner's responsibility to make sure of that? How often is it the, who's, who's going to get the misdemeanor charge? Do we even, do we even do that? So that was a question that came to mind from, from that. Okay, G was my, my other question. To me, when I read this one, it sounds like you need to provide in a common area the kind of smoke alarm, I think about what in the school where you pull the handle down and it sets off the alarm. Is that what we're talking about here? Manually, can be manually triggered?
The, the pull type, yes, but not, it does not have to be monitored. It would just one that when you pull it, it makes the loud noise, so it'll alarm everyone in the structure that there is an emergency.
I think the intent of that was to ease the burden of the owner, rather than interconnect all the smoke alarms, so if there's a fire in my unit, it wakes you up in your unit, that's going to, that would take an awful lot of electrical work. But if we put a pole station in the common area, if I had a fire in my apartment, and I run down the stairs, I pull the pole station on my way out, and the bell will go off. It's a real simple system, and it would alert everyone else in the building.
So that, so that would be like the, the stairwell going in, if there's interior entrances, it would be just inside the door, something like that. What if they're all exterior entrances, what do you, where do you put that? But I, I'm not sure, I just want people to understand where the common area is, where this is supposed to go.
If there's no common area, maybe that one, would that not be required? Like, like, you know, if there's three separate outside.
Yeah, it should not, I don't think it should be required if there's no common area.
If they have four different entrances.
Yeah, and where would you?
Yeah, because it'd be impossible to maintain them.
And probably nobody would go by it on their way out.
And this is one of the things, it looks, it looks hard on a, maybe a building owner, but actually, it actually eases their burden of having to interconnect all the fire alarms. It actually might be easier.
I'm not, I'm not intimately aware with the NFPA regulations, so reading this, I'm trying, I'm thinking of it from a practical standpoint, and where am I going to find it? Where would I expect to find it if I lived in one of these places? If I own one of these places, where do I need to put it? That's how I'm looking at it. Thank you.
You guys feel that there's enough with the other items, that that could be removed?
I mean, couldn't, couldn't you say if, you know, multiple, uh, multiple-family dwelling owners must provide an approved fire alarm system in common areas, you know, or in.
Or where common areas exist.
Where common areas exist, there you go. Which is initiated by manual means, such system shall be installed in accordance, in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendation?
Yeah, that's easy, so that would only be the values that have it, and excludes the others.
All right, do we have any other questions? All right, so we've got changes to G, where, where common areas exist. We've got the changes to fifteen point two four, point one two three zero. Approved type is going to be defined as ABC. And was there something else?
Making the definition clearer.
Changes to focus this specifically on, not conforming. Okay, any other comments or questions?
And they have to have them inspected every year, fire extinguisher.
They're usually good for two years, I think.
Every two years, I put it.
The extinguishers, they're, most of them are ten years, like, if you buy one off the shelf, they have expiration date on the bottom, so.
We have ours inspected at the office.
Yeah, because they're, they're serviceable, the, the ones you buy and you just.
They're just thrown away.
Throw them away, and buy one, they usually have an, they, not usually, they have an expiration date stamped on the bottom.
So that would go, that would coincide with the smoke. So that would go, that would coincide with the smoke detectors.
You can buy that, um, fire extinguisher, mount it, um, it should be current, kind of like you need to put something in legislation that says it's not, well, it's not expired, but it kind of goes without saying, I guess, but they're usually good for ten years. They're definitely good for ten years.
We've got two pack.
And they, and they would be one of those things that the code enforcement officers, when they're performing their interior inspections, as they go through, they would pick them up and look at the expiration date. They, they would look that they're there and then they would check the expiration date along with these other items.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments?
Could we, um, get this back so we can read it and look over it?
Sure.
Before we.
Yeah, can, are you going to make the changes?
Yeah, some of the changes.
Can you share it with counsel?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And the consensus is that this will only apply to non-conforming conversions, basically, of single-family dwellings.
Single-family, yeah.
Or conforming, or, yeah, non-conforming but legal usage, yes.
Non-conforming, but legal.
Yeah.
And I don't think we use the word legal in the.
Just non-conforming.
Right.
Non-conforming uses.
All right.
You, just non-conforming, not, not legal, non-conforming.
Right.
Is there a counsel consensus to raise this voice? Thank you very much. And that's that.
Do you take any questions or comments on that?
I'm sorry?
Do you take any questions or comments on that?
I'll, I'll take, I'll take a question or comment, if you want to come to the voting.
If you don't mind, sure. I'd just like to introduce myself, I am, you all, but it's Mike Weisner and I've got some rental properties in Salisbury. And I'm here more just out of, trying to understand what the law is, rather than being opposed to anything, you know, in general. Uh, but I did notice it said non-conforming on the, the sheet here, but it didn't say anything about non-conforming on that, so I guess you just addressed that issue? That's good. Um, the ABC is a good thing for the fire alarm and they come in different sizes, so maybe you put two-pound, five-pound, whatever you're going to use, I think that would be good. The question I had, uh, the, uh, state of Maryland, for the most part, phased in, uh, smoke detector laws since nineteen seventy-five and I've got a chart, there's like seven different requirements, depending on when the property was built. So, right now, there's no requirement that I know of that there be smoke alarms in individual bedrooms unless the house was built after a certain date. And most of these properties you're talking about would be built prior to a certain date. So, most, I think by law, right now, they are not required to have a smoke detectors in each individual, individual bedroom, but are required to have them in the premises on one on each level. I think it's a great idea to have it in each bedroom. Uh, and especially with a new ten-year sealed unit battery type that you can put in each bedroom. They're only, I looked it up, I went on Lowe's, it's twenty-five bucks, uh, you can put them in the bedroom, they're good for ten years and I think it's going to save lives, I think it should be for all properties, no matter owner occupied or not, non-conforming use or conforming use, I think it'd be good to have it everywhere for the cost of a smoke detector. So, my suggestion, even though I'm a landlord, is require it everywhere. Uh, and because if it's a sealed battery unit and you don't have to wear them for ten years or inexpensive, there's no reason not to do it. That way, I would look at that. The other thing is, I think they did require too many smoke detectors. I think generally you have one on each level and then one in each bedroom should be sufficient. What was my main concern was under the, um, carbon monoxide detectors. I don't know what the law is right now, but any property I have that has a gas fire appliance, not having a stove, but if they have a, a water heater or a dryer or a furnace that is natural gas, I don't have any oil, but natural gas, I put a s- carbon monoxide detector in that room. If there's going to be a problem, it's going to be in that room. If the flame goes off, they know what the problem is because it's in the room for the furn- appliances and hopefully they'll leave the premises or make a call. So, I think that would be, to put them throughout the whole apartment or unit, uh, doesn't make a lot of sense. I've got a property on Wayl Street, it's got two furnaces in the basement, sealed basement, I put a carbon monoxide detector there. It has two bedrooms, it's got a hallway, it's got a living room, uh, times four, so basically they're saying I need like sixteen additional carbon monoxide detectors, when it's unlikely that the person on the second floor is ever going to have any problem, or even on the first floor, but there would be a problem in the basement and that's where it's going to go off. So, I just, uh, would like to clarify that when you say they should be put in every room, just like smoke detectors are in line item B, then I think that might be best to be modified.
So, um, chief, you know, if you could just weigh in on this, if you disagree with me, but here's what I think would make sense is if we could adapt or, um, edit C, multifamily dwelling owners must provide and install carbon monoxide detector alarms in every dwelling unit that has fuel-fired appliances, comma, and then it says currently, in the same manner as in paragraph B of this subsection, I think that could simply say, "In the room in which the fuel-fired appliance."
I would think that would be adequate.
My question about that, though, is if it's in the basement and you're on the first floor or the second floor, can you hear that? Because the gas will travel up, but will the sound of the alarm travel up?
I don't know.
I can, I, I'll try.
Can you?
There's a standard for that. NFPA has a standard for the installation of, um, carbon monoxide alarms and they just, it references every floor. So.
So rather than every unit.
It could go back.
One, one per unit, in the basement plus one per unit?
Yes, it's, the basement.
That might be, that might be smarter than just per level, um, you know, because we're talking about, you know, houses that are cut. And so, if it, if it reached, you know, the second floor or the first floor, there are two units, but they're divided by, you know, a well-constructed wall, that the gas may be on both sides, but the alarm may not be audible.
Well, that would make sense.
Yeah, it said, the standard says outside of each sleeping area, so instead of having it in a bedroom, it could be in a hallway if there's two or three bedrooms and on every level. So, basement, per second floor and outside of each, so if you had two units on one floor, it's outside of each bedroom, you're going to end up by default with two.
Outside of each unit, you mean?
Inside, outside of each bedroom.
Inside.
In each, one per unit.
I think one per unit would probably cover it.
Yeah, that's.
One per floor per unit, in other words, if there, you have a multi-floor unit, you need it on each floor of that unit as well.
Oh, yeah, if that exists.
If that, yeah.
And I don't know if you would use a smoke, I mean, a battery-operated one would be sufficient or they have to be wired in. Better work with carbon monoxide detector? That'd make the, it'd be easier.
Information to make that change.
One per unit per floor.
Right, and, and basement as well, I think.
Yeah, where, wherever the location of the, uh, combustion fire appliance.
Yeah, if the fuel fire appliance is in the basement, that should be, if we can reference it somehow, so that it captures. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because, yeah, I just, my original understanding was every room, which makes no sense to me from a carbon monoxide point of view.
Make sense? Okay. All right, thanks.
The next thing I had just under power source, the way this is written, it says the, uh, for D on the bottom of page one, the power source or smoke detector shall be either AC primary source or a monitorized battery primary power. I don't know what monitorized is, I went to Lowe's and looked everything up. Monitorized means somebody's going to monitor it. I think, why don't you just put, with a sealed battery unit, sort of approved for ten-year life, would probably, unless there's, you guys know, the fire department knows what.
Does it mean?
I'm not sure what that means, but I'm.
But I'm afraid when the.
I think that might mean you push the test button.
But I don't, but it may not mean that, I'm not sure.
I mean, in my home, I have a battery-operated one that starts ringing when the battery gets low and I assume that's, that's what I assumed that it meant.
But it didn't say that in Lowe's when I was reading the descriptions, it'd have a ten-year life. And the ten-year, uh, life batteries are three volt rather than twelve and I guess that's, and they're sealed units, so. Maybe if you deal in compliance with Maryland state law, because Maryland state law now approves ten-year sealed battery smoke detectors for that type of use.
Can, can you, um, work to find language that accurately captures what we're, what we're talking about? Yes, Susan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the last comment I had, I think you addressed the last comment I had, was regarding, and I think Laura brought it up. Um, I've got a six-unit townhouse, two of them over on South Boulevard in Logan, where they're townhouses, there is no common area. Each one has its own exit directly out, there is no place to put it, whole thing. And, uh, so I think it'd be, you know, no point in having that. But it doesn't say that I cannot have, according to the way the law is, I have to have it regardless of that, so.
That's outdated, well, when counsel came.
So, that's, but those were my concerns, I appreciate you listening to me and your time and you're going in the right direction, I appreciate your doing for the citizens.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Anything else, let's give it a go. You feel like you have enough direction? All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
See you later.